All right, Angela, it's all you.
Hey, welcome everyone to the planning commission meeting for May the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Kelly, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Capuzzi.
Here.
Mr. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Pointon.
Here.
Mr. Shannon. Mr. Shannon. Yeah, I see you saying here, I can't hear you. Um, Ms. Dobbs.
Here.
Mr. Fear de Mondo.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Okay, um, I guess if everyone would, uh, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic which is standing.
One nation.
Under God.
Stationed under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the, uh, first business item on our agenda this evening is the final preliminary final land development plans for additions to the Havreford High School. And, uh, we have representative of the school district here and I'm guess whoever's going to make the first presentation that introduce everyone from the school board or school.
Sure, good evening, everyone. My name's Kent Matthews. We're, uh, the owners reps of the school district, company CB Development. Uh, we're happy to be back after a long, long time off, like I'm sure the rest of you are. Uh, so as you all know, we're here to present, um, this for the second time, uh, in front of you, the two additions that are proposed for the high school. Uh, we have a classroom addition and then we have a music wing addition along with the associated site improvements, uh, that expands the parking lot as well. Uh, so tonight we have, uh, Ryan Oars from KCDA. They're the architects on the project. We have Ron Mon- Moncrey and Brian Hensel from Gilmore Associates, the civil engineers on the project. Uh, Dr. Maureen Ruchi, the superintendent of schools, uh, is here as well, and I didn't see, uh, Dave Schwartz, uh, on the school board is present. And I believe Larry, uh, Feinberg was supposed to be, but he may just be watching, uh, on the public channel, so. Uh, but that's, that's our team for this evening, so, you know, we'll kind of, uh, give the brief presentation, you know, just to kind of regurgitate what the reason for all this is, uh, you know, the school district had a, uh, demographic study done, uh, a year and a half, almost two years ago now. And there's going to be approximately four hundred more students coming into that are in the district now and will be coming to the high school, so that's what prompted this project. Uh, so we've been, uh, in design and have, uh, we presented, I guess, we were back in January. Plan was presented, the preliminary site plans and the proposed addition, so we're here as a follow-up. There's been some back and forth, uh, over the recent months between our civil engineer and Panoni, the township engineer. So, uh, we'll go walk through some of that, um, go through the plans briefly again and certainly, um, we'll leave it up to you all if, if you want to interrupt and ask any questions or uh, I'll turn it over to Ron, uh, to go back through the site plans. So any specific civil engineering, uh, site questions can be asked, and then Ryan from KCBA will do just a brief, uh, overview, just a few renderings that we have to remind everybody what the additions look like, where they are, uh, on, on the, on the building and, um, then of course, we'll be open for question and, and open dialogue. Thank you again for having us, uh, and at this point I'll turn it over to Ron.
Good evening, thank you again for having us, as Kent mentioned, um, I will start right into, I attempt to share my screen with you, uh, hopefully this works. I'm not going to go through every plan set, but I'll just touch on a couple of the high points and then start to review the township engineer's letter, um, point by point, if, if that's acceptable to all of you. Let me give it a shot. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
No.
Uh, wait.
Uh, we have something.
Got something, yes.
Okay. Uh, no, no?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, good. All right, so might be a delay, but you're familiar with where this school is, uh, the plans remain substantially similar to, uh, how they were in January. A layout has not changed significantly. Uh, the one-story building addition I'll point to over here, that's the music wing. That is about, again, eighty-five hundred square feet.
Ron, please, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
From the broadcast view, we're still just seeing the folder itself and not the plans.
Sorry.
Uh, that's okay. Um, not sure, is it, or is everyone else seeing it?
Yeah, that's all.
I just see the PDFs, that's all.
Right, okay.
Kelly, Kelly, do you have the plan on that you can?
Uh, not on this computer, but, um.
There you go.
Oh, there we go, there we go.
That's better.
That's okay.
All right, I'm getting the hang of this.
So I'm going to actually minimize that, right?
Thank you.
You can actually.
Thanks.
Is that whoever's talking?
Okay.
All right.
There you go.
So this is just a zoom in on the, on the record plan, but just kind of a quick overview, the one-story music edition, the yellow box is popping up, but it's, it's in the lower left, north, uh, northwest corner. Uh, then these quarters, the three-story classroom addition, that is about, uh, six thousand seven hundred thirty square feet. So, print. Uh, site plans remain the same in terms of, uh, the, the expanded parking lot, um, from last time. We added some detailing relative to, relative to a few items such as the field access here, the gate and so forth, some stormwater details. I was going to the January meeting, uh, uh, with you, we met with the shade tree commission and reviewed landscaping plans. Uh, they were on, on board with it. We answered some questions of theirs. And, uh, we, uh, we secured their, their endorsement of the, of the planting strip we had shown, uh, on the back here between the playfield and, and the parking area. Let me get this zoomed back out. Are you with me? I don't know if you can still, can you still see my screen?
Yes.
Good. Get to one plan here, this, that's me. As before, we, we continue to have. Yeah. I'm too far, bridge too far. All right, come on. Still have a delay. Brian, get me to the, try to get to the PCSM.
So that's sheet eight.
Okay. Okay, this kind of gives an overall snapshot of some of these site improvements. I will try to point using my pointer here. The big underground basin here remains consistent with the prior plan. Again, we're oversizing that, uh, capture as much of the upstream runoff as we possibly can. Uh, that runoff accounts for about seventy percent the total watershed drain to this bed. And, uh, again, the, the classroom wing, um, uh, is in large part a green roof with overflows draining into an existing underground basin in the existing parking lot behind it, and those overflows continue, uh, to flow out. And, uh, and then, uh, are working in conjunction with the new basin, help manage, uh, the overflow from the classroom wing. So that, that overall big picture stormwater wise, uh, remains unchanged. I don't want to go into too many details and waste your time. I thought I would just proceed at this point to go through the review letter unless anybody has any, uh, further comments right now. Okay.
Okay.
The May eleventh, two thousand and twenty letter from Panoni.
Yes.
On that, um, one, one point I'll, I'll mention before I get into any, any of these is the, uh, the waiver requests, uh, from the first plan that we reviewed in January. We had one waiver on there related to school water, which has since been removed to this revised plan. Uh, there are some details that we're working through, uh, Panoni's office with. I believe we're pretty close to consensus on that waiver is no longer necessary at this point. So that's been struck in from the waiver request.
That's the waiver from the, uh, two-year free or two-year post to one-year free?
That's correct. It was specific to one isolated area of, of, of water on, on the land view the lower left side. All right, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen, I'm going to try to.
I already took it down.
Okay. All right, I'll just go through the review comments here. Number one, the sewage planning module exemption, uh, has been filed. Uh, we're working through some of the details, uh, from from our team MEP engineer on some of those flows, and as soon as we're done that, we will submit for a draft over to Chuck at Panoni for review. But that's, that's in process. Uh, conservation district, number two. Uh, we just today, uh, secured their, their administrative maintenance approval, so they're, they're pushing that along to the technical review phase. And so, so that's a positive sign. Um, for number three. The, uh, yeah, that's, that's what we spoke of earlier with the two-year stormwater peak rate control being reduced to the, to the one-year pre-development. Uh, that's an item that we're, you know, we, we believe we've addressed. Uh, we're working through some of the details with Panoni in terms of how to present that data, but, uh, we believe the plan, uh, is compliant. We just need to kind of, uh, get on the same page there. And, um, number four, uh, is basically pretty similar. It, it's related to number three. Uh, and, and, you know, just between Friday and today, we've shared a few emails and, and phone calls with Chuck. So we're hopeful we'll get this ironed out, but those details seem to be, you know, pretty well at hand. Number five. There's some additional notes we need to add in terms of, uh, the, the remedial work necessary to the underground bed and how to go about documenting that on the plan. And so, uh, that's something that we, we sent a draft to Chuck today to try to, uh, come to agreement on that, and I think we're there, uh, if I'm not mistaken. Number six, so we'll comply, uh, creating the ENS control permit being needed, yes. Comply item seven, uh, similarly, the, the maintenance and group and operations agreement for the BMPs needs to be in place, so we'll comply. And then, uh, under general, number one, uh, we spoke with Chuck, Chuck's office about, um, different ideas we can do to, uh, basically help alleviate a, you know, a worst case overflow event at these two inlets that we, at the, the concrete courtyard that's, uh, being proposed in between the three-story addition and the existing building. Uh, that's something we're working through. Um, we'll need to coordinate with, with the water company on that. Our ability to lower that grade, you know, is, is somewhat hindered by being able to provide cover over the existing water main there. But, uh, we will see what we can do to accomplish that. But that's a work in progress, but, you know, that's something we have a definitive answer on right this second, but we are working on it. A general comment, number two, uh, relates to the request to new design and install two new, uh, ADA ramps, uh, off-site or at the front end of the site, I should say, uh, outside of this scope of work and, and, uh, the applicant has agreed to do that. About a week ago, we mobilized our survey crew, uh, to that end to, to survey the ramp on the opposite side of the site frontage on the old road, so uh, we're incorporating that data. We'll get those ramps designed and submitted to the township engineer. General note, um, at the bold number one at the bottom of the page. There's some grading details that, you know, we're, we're going to implement in coordination with, uh, Panoni's office. And number two is a little comply, uh, they suggest that we add some, some sumps which are, um, additional depth in the bottom of the inlet box. It helps to control, uh, pollution, so, you know, any oils or debris that might come from the parking lot into the storm sewer system. It just provides an additional place for, for pollutants and whatnot, uh, particulates to settle out, uh, and get trapped in the inlet as opposed to, you know, going right into the underground stormwater beds. So that's a little comply. I don't know, uh, if you want to take questions on, on this review now, or if you want to have Ryan, uh, speak?
Um, yeah, if Ryan has some information he wants to share, why don't we do that before we get into our questions?
Sure. Um, so thank you very much, uh, for, uh, meeting with us again. Um, I'm just going to quickly, uh, run through the, the general architectural premise, uh, again. Uh, can you see on the screen the existing, uh, high school, um, floor plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, the top, uh, uh, northeast corner, uh, as described is where that, that, um, classroom wing addition will be built. Um, and the bottom left-hand corner is where that, uh, music wing addition, uh, would be built in terms, uh, of, of site, site area. And once again, uh, just an image, uh, portraying the, the three-story classroom wing. We're using complementary materials, um, to the existing, uh, high school building, adorable materials, masonry, um, and, uh, metal panels, uh, in some areas, uh, up above. So then that was the classroom wing, moving over to the other side, the music wing addition. Once again, a band in an orchestra room, uh, using durable materials, um, and then, and then up above, um, metal panel and, and obviously, uh, glass glazing. But from an architectural, uh, standpoint, uh, for site development, those, those are the two, two items and, and what they look like.
Yeah, I, I know Jesse had some, uh, had asked for some information about materials and things like that. Jesse, do you want to ask those questions now before we let Ryan go?
Yeah, actually, yeah, Ryan, oh, could we put that back up on the screen?
Sure, sure.
Is that possible? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you could just run us through, I think I saw a brick at the base and I just was that, I wasn't sure of the material. So, uh, yeah, I guess maybe start at the classroom, the classroom wing and then.
Absolutely.
That's brick. What is the spandrel panel between?
Um, so this has actually since been, um, revised due, due to cost constraints, but, uh, this would essentially be an entirely brick, uh, facade on the left-hand side here, um, with, with storefront window infills. The right-hand side, the white that you see is a, uh, decorative concrete, uh, masonry unit, so a, a CMU, uh, concrete masonry unit, um, very adorable. Long, longevity, long longevity, um, um, material, so, so maintenance-wise, it, um, it'll, it'll be there, be there, uh, solid for a while. And then on the music wing addition, same thing, both the white infill pieces that you see are once again that decorative concrete masonry unit. Uh, and then, yeah, we're showing a brick base, uh, to keep that durable material, uh, down low, close to the ground, and then, uh, after a sufficient, uh, amount, we switch to metal panel, um, for that, that look.
So the ver- the vertical striated panels, that's a, that's another kind of metal, that's not, uh, wood or?
Correct, it's a, it's a metal panel, so, so once again, still adorable, uh, material that, um, it, you know, withstands, uh, the elements, you know, it, it won't, it won't fade, it won't rot, it, again, right, it's not, it's not wood. Um, so, uh, once again, maintenance, limited maintenance to that, that facade as well.
And the, and the color is intended to kind of be in, in, uh, coordination with the existing brick color?
Yes, yeah, correct, so that, that, um, you know, uh, orangey-brown range tone, um, in there, uh, and the, the widths might vary. Um, we might not get that exact striation, um, uh, but, uh, again, that, uh, either a mix of those colors or, or, uh, like a one or two color pattern might be the, the final, uh, design.
And then the roof, the roof edge fascia, then I know you had green roof on top?
Yeah, so correct, so, uh, the, the, the green roof, um, is following this pitched, pitched plane, um, so it's at a, uh, uh, a one and twelve slope, um, but, uh, we're capturing as much rainwater as we can up there, uh, with the great, with the green roof, um, and then it would be, uh, any overflow would be dropped onto the, the flat roof and then obviously moved on to the site. And then again, on the classroom wing addition, we're planning, um, for roughly about a third of that, third, a quarter of that to be, uh, vegetated roof as well.
I have a question about the windows, um, especially for the music wing area. Um, are these going to be tempered in a way to reduce bird strikes?
Um, so, uh, typically, um, the, the, uh, bird strike, um, is not, uh, in, included in, in these types of, uh, window glazing, uh, systems, uh, we can certainly look into it. Part of the reason is, um, just, just the cost, actually, there's, there's, um, other, other, um, methods to, to decrease bird strikes, um, that, that had an extent, extensive amount, uh, to the project. So currently, currently there is not, uh, any additional features to prevent bird strikes.
Thank you.
Rob, did you have any questions for the architect?
I was just curious, what's behind the, the metal facade? Is it a CMU backed up wall? What, and how thick is that metal panel?
So, uh, currently the plan is, uh, for it to be a stud, a backup wall, so, so the structural is, it's a, it's a, um, uh, metal framed building, uh, with, uh, steel stud, uh, backup. Um, and the, the, the metal panel, um, is, it's a, it's a sheet good, uh, essentially, um, uh, like, uh, it's, it's not like a, it's not like a metal siding that's an individual, um, panel. It, it would just be like a, a corrugation, um, panel that's roughly, uh, eight feet wide by twelve feet long hung, um, that's the current plan.
Yeah, I'd be curious how the, how the joints are established when you're limited. I mean, the, the rendering looks great, but where are the joints in the metal panel itself?
Sure, so, um, it, it would be, it would be hung vertically. We're actually doing something, uh, very similar over at, uh, Linwood Elementary as well, um, if you see there, um, the, the, um, uh, mechanical screen that's up top, you, you, some of that panel is actually, uh, there. You can see that, um, the, the vertical stripes are the, the direction that the panel is, uh, mounting, um, so it would be mounted, uh, vertically and then, you know, next panel lays in next to it.
I'll take a look at it, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, all right, thanks for your, for the information, Ryan. Uh, Ron, you're back up and Jack, and we'll start with you if you have any questions for the civil engineer.
I, I have two questions. One, I think last time we spoke, I was curious of, about the, the buses mounting the curbs. And I studied the land development plans and I don't see a curb profile that appears to be able to handle a bus. Is there a different mountable curb section planned?
I believe, well, we have, um, turning templates, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we do have a truck, like a, we often call a truck turning template for the school bus.
Yes, we, yep.
Is that right, Brian?
Yeah, we have a school bus turning template.
Maybe that's something that, um, would be helpful to review. I don't know if you can pull that up, Brian, but, um, essentially, we're trying to avoid the need to have buses have to drive up over the curb, but there's a couple of areas where we have, you know, the flush curb, mainly the one, the island, uh, to the plan, upper right side, you know, the, the back of the parking lot. That, that's a completely flush curb with a recessed island slightly, um, that goes to an inlet. So if, you know, if a bus were to drive over that, uh, they could, it would just, it would just be at grade, so to speak. Uh, I don't believe we have a need for like a traditional mountable curb, um, like we might see on other, you know, smaller projects, um, in a, in a borough setting or a town setting. Um, if there's an area in particular that you have concern about, then, you know, we could look into doing something there. But, how you doing there, Brian? Are you able to pull that up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh, school bus turning plan and, um, right now, I mean, yeah, the turn clears, uh, clears all the curb. It would only just be like the overhang of the bus that would, uh, be going over the curb, but it wouldn't hit it, so, um, the wheels are able to clear, uh, the curb, so.
Mr. Garrett, is there a specific area that, uh, was of concern? I'm sorry, you're muted. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, no, I think that if it shows that it's overlapping, but that's because of overhang, then that explains what I'm seeing when I look at that plan.
Yes, it's.
The second question I had was about the, the site lighting.
Yes.
Are, is this going to be a particularly bright space? And have we considered the amount of light pollution that this is going to be creating? Lighting that parking lot?
A good question. We, we're always trying to strike the delicate balance between, you know, complying with the ordinance and, and not making it, you know, a Walmart parking lot. Um, these, these lights do have, they're all going to be the, the LED types, uh, of the district's, uh, request. And, you know, if you look at our lighting plan, we show, uh, what's called IES files, the, uh, like a light distribution, uh, pattern. And, um, basically the outer rings of that pattern, you know, you want to have overlap with each other, so you don't create, um, a dead spot or a, you know, an area where somebody, you know, somebody could be doing something they're not supposed to be doing. You don't want to have a dark spot, so, so you don't want to, you don't want to have too many of those lines on the inside, Todd, because that means you have too many lights, so, you know, so we, we did our best to try to balance that and, and spread those fixtures while still also not creating a security concern. So, um, in short, we, best we could to, to not make it super bright, but while also meeting the requirements.
Thank you.
Uh, Jack, just so you know, the, the township ordinance requires that all light fixtures be full, what are called full cutoff type fixtures. They can't be angled and pointed out, they're straight down, and also, um, they're limited in height to twenty feet, so you're not going to see something here that you would see in a shopping center or something like that. Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Maggie? Any questions?
No further questions, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Okay. Rob?
Nope. I got it. Thank you.
Okay, David?
Have you looked at the plantings as a way of blocking some of the light for the neighborhood?
Well, what we're trying to do is, you know, to the rear of the parking lot, you know, you know, we do have that screen there, but they're, you know, much like the existing parking lot today, we're limited by utilities in a lot of the curved islands that are in the parking lot, but there's our ability to put plants there. But so to answer your question, we can't, we can't provide as much as we as we would like to for that reason. And the interconnected streets also make it hard to to buffer that light. But, you know, we are, you know, complying with the pole height, you know, these are 20 feet. There's a mounting height, you know, so we're doing our best. And I believe the district will have these on timers. I'm not sure that we have the wiring turned out yet, but we did add two more trees since the last plan along the 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 side street plan left. We added a shade, a canopy tree, a flowering tree there, but.
Yeah, and the trees that are being planted are, I think, I don't know the exact number, but are well above what was required. And that north expansion of the parking lot, basically, there's a full screen wall of ever, they're almost all evergreens, I believe, not having a plan in front of me. So there will be a good buffer along there.
Yeah, which isn't there today.
And with the LEDs shining straight down, what are the height of our lights?
They're 20 foot maximum at the mounting height. So that's from the grade.
Put a grade up.
And the evergreens are on the baseball field side, is that right?
That's correct. So yes, essentially, right field, well, very, very far out, right field, major league right field, is is basically a solid wall without 20 trees.
Oh, thank you.
Jesse, you have anything?
Nothing further, thank you.
Mr. Reardon?
I just have a couple of comments, and one of them is always about lighting. And when we were dealing with the playgrounds that were in and around the old Stratford Elementary School and some of the other issues, one of the difficulties with balancing the desire to allow the community around the school to have less light pollution is that we are also dealing with keeping good lines of sight so that we can stay on top of who's walking around in the on the campus. And that also allows our police departments and and individuals who are looking out for the better, for the for the young people who are in the charge of the, under the charge of the school, we we need to make certain that they are safe. So lighting has, is a is a double edged sword, and we need to remember that. So, Ron, I think, I think that I I want to err on the side of taking care of young people who are can be vulnerable from time to time. That's it for me.
Okay, my turn. I I want to acknowledge some of the planned changes that were made at the request of the Plan Commission. I appreciate you folks following through with those. You you added, you upgraded the handicap ramps at the intersection of Mill Road and Alston Road. It looks like you're going to install a ductile iron pipe in the storm sewer that runs below the three story addition. And you also eliminated the step that was proposed at the junction between the existing parking lot and the new parking lot. So we do appreciate you picking up those comments. In regards to the handicap ramps, I was hoping that in addition to redoing the ramps, you would also, as part of the work at that intersection, refresh the pavement markings for that crosswalk. Be nice to have pavement markings that that are new and reflect the new condition of the ramps. So would ask that you do that.
Yeah, certainly. We can easily incorporate them.
Yes. There's 20 line striping to do, so that's easily done. I want to ask Mr. Faulkner whether or not he shares the same confidence in regards to the stormer management discussions that you've had with with the engineer.
All right. About that. All right, we I've had various discussions with both Ron and Brian about this. The the stormwater management's a matter of methodology which was used. It's it's, in my opinion, it's not, it's not a deal breaker. It's not going to blow up the whole stormwater management system. It's simply a matter of refining the details. Maybe there's some modifications to the outlet structure such, but like I said, it's not a deal breaker and I don't see it being anything we can't resolve.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. One last time, anybody on the board have any follow up questions they'd like to ask? Ding. Nope. No? All right.
Did we get any public questions?
We have not received, actually, let me just check one last time, but we have not received any communication from the public for participation.
Okay, all right. So that being the case, I will entertain a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary final plans to the Board of Commissioners. Anybody want to make that motion?
Oh, yeah. I would make, I'll make that motion, Angelo. Yep. Motion to, I would make, I would make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Subject to, if it's all right, Angelo, subject to the compliance with the with the letter of May 11, 2020, plus the additional striping that you mentioned for the handicapped walkways, shouldn't we add the May 11, 2020 revised plan remarks from Mr. Faulkner and with them being complied to? And I know I don't do it as well as you do, so if you want to clean it up, I'll be more than happy.
All right, Jesse, let me let me take a stab that we recommend approval of the preliminary final subdivision plans of Board Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the comments contained in the Penotti Review Letter dated May 11, 2020, that the pavement markings for the crosswalk at the intersection of Mill Road and Alston Road be refreshed as part of the upgrade of the handicap ramps at that intersection. That appropriate documentation be presented to the township engineer regarding the condition of the existing underground detention basin. And finally, that that the plans coordinate the location of of any depressed or manable curbs, which may be required to accommodate turning movements for buses and fire equipment. You okay with that amendments? Bessie?
I am, yes. I should have let you do it in the first place.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Maggie. So we have a motion and it's been seconded. Anybody have any questions about the motion? Seeing none? Kelly, could you take a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdomondo?
Yes.
And Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, guys, thanks for your cooperation and good luck with your project. And I do have one final question for Ken.
Yes, sir.
How's work going at Linwood School?
Well, first, thank you for the approved motion this evening. Glad to get through the process and continue that. But Linwood work started last Monday, little bit slow the first few days, but already things have, as of the end of last week, really ramped up. You know, we're dealing with the daily issues of men having to wear masks and deal with all the CDC guidelines and the governor's requirements, just as, you know, myself is along with any other staff going on site. But, you know, they'll start, seem to start getting used to it. I'm sure as it gets hotter, it's going to get a lot harder with the mask on, you know, especially for some of the the heavy lifting like the masons and those type of trades, you know, working up high in the ceiling. But it's whatever, it's kind of, you know, the new thing when hard hats had to be worn hour and many years ago, just something everybody has to deal with. But so far, the work's progressing very well. And so deal with, you know, we lost six weeks, but I think they'll make it up quickly. So things are moving along great.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I'll be preparing the resolution for this to go on the June Board of Commissioners meeting, which is the regular meeting scheduled for June 8. There's generally a work session we have not been having in the past few months, which would be on June 1. I'm not sure whether that's still going to be held, but otherwise, we'll have this for final approval before the Board Commissioners on June 8.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have review of minutes from the February 13th Planning Commission meeting. Anybody have any additional comments they want to add to those minutes? If not, someone would make a recommendation or a motion to approve them, we'll do that.
I'll do that. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from our February meeting.
Second. Okay, there's a motion that's been seconded. Kelly, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Capuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Reardon?
Yes.
Mr. Pointon?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Ms. Dobbs?
Yes.
Mr. Fierdomondo?
Yes.
And Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have anything they want to bring up before we sign off?
This is obviously a new format. I certainly hope that it that it that we're able to keep going forward. I am, I appreciate everything that the people in the township are doing for all of us. And thank you, Kelly, for all of your extra work. And I just wanted to say thank you. It's good to see you all as remotely as it is.
Yes. Same here.
We got anything coming up, Cal?
We do have a plan for, it's really a discussion, nothing formal submitted, but that that is in, coming before you soon. There's also a subdivision that we should be ready to review, possibly, I don't know, Chuck Faulkner? Want to give me a thought?
When's the next meeting, Cal?
Let's see, our, well, the next meeting would be in two weeks, which we will obviously not be prepared for. But following that would be June 11.
Yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so by June 11, we should have another subdivision coming before you.
And how about 57 South Eagle Road?
57 South Eagle is the the discussion item, which I will also plan for June 11, since we have that other subdivision as well.
Okay, very good. Okay, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll be happy to do that again, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No, okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Very much.
Good night.
Good to see everyone.
You too. Night.
Night.
We're good.